Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganech.net.
The Quarterdeck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarterdeck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
I'd like to call this Board of Selectment meeting to order for May 11, 2020. Welcome and thank you for joining us. As has been the requirement, I am going to read through the rules and the information regarding remotely conducted meetings. As a preliminary matter, I will begin with confirming the individuals who are present in regards to the board and staff. Obviously, we'll have some other guests as the evening progresses. When I call out your name, please repeat your name and note that you're here. Sam Patterson?
Sam Patterson, present.
Okay, Megan English-Braga, present. Douglas Brown?
Doug Brown, present.
Okay, Doug Jones?
Doug Jones, here.
Susan Moran?
Moran, here.
Okay, Town Manager Julian Susso?
Julian Susso, here.
And Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub?
Peter Johnson Staub, here.
Great, thank you. And as usual, a huge thanks to our IT staff, as well as to FCTV for making sure that we're able to continue to conduct these meetings and get this information broadcasted out. Okay. The open meeting of the Board of Selectment is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to outbreak of COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The order does not require public participation, except for certain regulatory matters requiring a public hearing. At the discretion of the Chair, a method for public participation may be provided for matters that do not require it under this order. For this meeting, the Board of Selectment is convening by video conference via Zoom app. The meeting is also being broadcast on cable TV, Channel 15, and streamed online at www.fctv.org. For those who wish to view the meeting but do not wish to participate, we suggest viewing on FCTV. Members of the public who wish to make comments or ask questions during the meeting may join the meeting as Zoom attendees, which allows you to submit written comments and questions via the chat function, and also to see and hear the meeting in real time. Please note, there is a time lag between the real-time Zoom online meeting and the FCTV video, whether viewed on the cable TV or streamed online. The link in the instructions for joining the meeting are listed in the agenda posted on the town website. For more detailed instructions on how to use the chat function, please go to the town website and enter Zoom instructions in the search box at the top of the page. This meeting is being recorded, and some individuals who've been invited to make a presentation are also participating via video conference. For those of us who are participating as panelists on the video conference, please be aware that you can be seen and heard unless you have muted your microphone and/or camera. Panelists are asked to mute their mics except when speaking, and attempt to minimize background noise in your location to maintain audio quality. Also be advised, open windows on your computer may be broadcast and recorded if you hit the screen share button on your computer. Anything captured by this Zoom teleconference will be broadcast and recorded. All the meeting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town website unless otherwise noted. For this meeting, the meeting packet can be found on the Board of Selectment page by clicking on the Selectmen Meeting Packet tab on the bar menu, excuse me, on the menu bar on the left. We're going to turn to our first order of business shortly, but before we do so, please let me just cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Please remember when I introduce you to unmute your microphone and face the microphone of your computer so that you are recognized and can be heard clearly. Please remember to mute the mic on the Zoom app when you're not speaking, or a mobile phone mute, or if using a mobile phone, mute your phone when not speaking. When a meeting participant wishes to interject a question or comment, please state your name and ask to be recognized. After the presentation and member discussion, the Chair will ask a staff member to read any questions or comments typed into the Zoom chat by members of the public. All votes for this meeting will be taken via roll call. I'll call out the name of each member and ask you to repeat your last name before stating your vote. So, just a reminder for individuals who are not, who haven't been comfortable attending while we're in session, please feel free to contact us. I did receive some phone calls for individuals who weren't comfortable but wanted to share their thoughts about some of the items on the agenda, or send us emails. And if you specifically want that read into the public record, please just note that in your email, and we will do so. So, if you will join me in a pledge of allegiance, we will then begin our meeting.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Okay, get started this evening. Mr. Brown with recognition, please.
Yeah, let's recognize, first of all, the nurses and doctors that are working all across the country to keep everyone safe going right through this whole pandemic storm. But in addition, I'd like to recognize Cape Cod Healthcare. They put a lot of effort into getting the satellite facilities up and running and ready to go to Cape Cod Community College for providing their parking lot for Cape Cod Healthcare to set up for testing. Thank goodness, we really didn't need all these satellite facilities that they were working on. They set up the Royal Nursing Home as a COVID facility, just in case. So they were really ready, and they did a lot of work to get us ready. And let's hope that this whole thing will pass soon and they can get their furloughed workers back. There's 600 people out of work, is a lot of people, so I hope that's very short-lived. And best of luck to them, and thanks to their, to their good work.
Great, thank you. Any announcements? Just want to, I will announce, I just want to remind people that May 19 is an election day here in town. We have a special election, and we have a town election. So, really important to get out. And if people haven't already done so, check with the clerk's office to see if it's too late to try and get a mail, a ballot mailed to you. And there is certainly no reason why you can't be safe and healthy and also exercise your right to vote. So, folks have questions, contact the clerk's office. As we've noted previously, even though the town hall is closed to the public, everyone is here still working and available to answer calls. Doug, did I see you raise your hand? Doug Jones?
Yeah, just one thing. Michael Palmer says that the polling places will be open. They will be restricted, only six voters in at a time. Though there may be a line outside waiting during the social distancing, they will get everybody in, and as long as you're in line, there certainly will be voting.
Right. Sue?
And just one more thing on that. I understand from Mr. Palmer, if you right now request the ballot, do it online, print it, take a picture, send it to him, you just have to actually get the ballot mailed in by about the 16th, is what he said. So, there is still some time.
Great. And Doug Brown?
Just wanted to say, I think it was Sam Patterson who pointed out on Friday, I believe it was, that at least 5,000 people had already taken advantage of the mail-in voting, which is great. So, that's a big help.
Really great. And just want to thank folks for cooperating. We've been making that, you know, asking that, the, the public engage in that way to make Election Day a little bit easier and smoother for folks who are going to actually come out and vote for all of our poll workers. I don't know, I think that there is still an ask from the clerk's office for poll workers, if that's something that people are interested in doing, to reach out to our clerk this week, I would suggest. I know that he was asking as late as last week for some more volunteers. So, certainly an opportunity to give your time an important way for the town. So, if people are interested in doing that, they can contact him. Okay, any other announcements? Okay, great. I don't have anything that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just one thing I wanted to announce, it's sort of a public comment thing that I got from one of the people that emailed me this week, who, you know, I've got a lot of comments from people saying that people are really doing a great job of social distancing on the bike path, but then other people are seeing completely different things. So, I just want to remind people to please, if you're going to go on a public space, bear in mind the proximity that you're going to be coming into on the bike path. It's very tight in a lot of time. And so, bring a mask with you. You don't have to wear it every second, but you should be prepared that when you're going to pass somebody, that you can protect yourself and them, and especially on the bikeway, because it gets very crowded sometimes. And the governor's order extends beyond what we did a few weeks ago. It covers exterior spaces and public spaces, and the bike path is one of them. So, let's keep the bike path and all these other areas safe by wearing a mask and do the right thing.
Great. Thank you. Good point. Did, I didn't have, I was just going to note that we received a letter from John Turner. I think everybody was able, I think it was in everyone's mailbox and maybe also scanned to each of us. I won't read the whole letter. He didn't ask that it be read into public comment, but I'll just summarize it because he did send it to us. And really, the content of it was, I think he wrote it right before the governor mandated the face masks. So, it was essentially a critique of our vote for wearing masks in essential businesses. And he was just noting some of the different reasons. He felt it was sort of disheartening, or made people, sort of heightened folks' anxiety, and would make it difficult for people to be outdoors and do some of the things that would, he noted, keep people healthy, sort of exercising and being out in the sun. And I think he, you know, he was fairly adamant that he felt that it was something that, you know, he really couldn't support. And as I noted, I think it was before the governor's order, so I do want to just share that. He did take the time to write us a, a long letter and really spelled out his concerns. So, we thank him for that. Does anyone else have any other communications from individuals who asked that it be read into public comment? Okay. And Mr. Johnson Staub, do you have anyone who has a, let me just check the chat, who has a public comment to make?
I do not see any comments from the public, but not a bad idea to give them a moment to let them know that now is the time to send in a chat if they have a public comment.
Yep. So, what we'll do is we'll actually, we'll move to our summary of actions under, for licenses, and I know we have some individuals for that. If you're watching and you just have been trying to get your comment in for public comment, please do so now, and I'll check back after this first agenda item and read any of those into the record. Okay? So, I do believe that we have, let's see, I think we have Attorney Lebherz and Jim Estes up here for a summary of actions, application for multiple amendments of an all-alcoholic restaurant license, change of manager slash change of officers, Landfall Restaurant, 9 Luskam Avenue, Woods Hole. Welcome. While they're being welcomed in, I'll just summarize that. It looks like after we approved the, after we approved the change of manager, and the paperwork went up to the A, B, C, C, that they noted that an updating of some of the corporate records was required, and that that's what you're here for this evening. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Exactly right, Ms. Braga. We were, we were before you about a month ago, and we were grateful that the board saw fit to allowing us to change the manager. When we overlooked at that time, probably my fault, hate to admit it, but I believe it was, the officers, the officers of the corporation had changed a couple months prior. And it was piled with the Secretary of State. But frankly, I didn't realize there was a requirement to also include that in the package. So, when, when the approval of the manager's application got to the A, B, C, C, they were kind enough to call me and said we had to amend the filings, and that's why we're before you tonight. The officers of the corporation are, James Estes, to my right here, is president. His niece Kathleen is the vice president. James is treasurer, and his wife Jean is the secretary. A year or so ago, at this point in time, it was Donnie, Jim's brother, that was president, and, and Jim was vice president. So, that's really the only change. I hope, who I might, might see it as, as a matter of housekeeping. But we're here to answer any questions if you have them. Doug, you're all welcome down here, if you'd like to come down.
I think we absolutely need an onsite inspection. That's clear. To really clear up what's happening. Does anyone in the board have a question? I mean, I think it's, you know, this is obviously a well-established business. These things happen all the time when you do the change of manager. The rules for the, for the A, B, C, C are really, it feels like every year, a little bit more stringent, and they definitely go things, go through things with a fine-tooth comb. So, it sounds like a housekeeping order. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this application for multiple amendments?
I move.
Okay.
Patterson.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Doug Brown, seconded it. All right. By roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
And aye.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Take care.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All in the family.
Yes.
Thanks, yep.
All right. Let me go back and just see if, I'm going to check one more time. It doesn't look like there are any public comments. And so, I think we will move forward from that. Okay. Under administrative orders, we have approve ever-source petition for the installation of one 4-inch conduit at Acapescot Road north of Gary Avenue. The proposed location is required for sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, along, and across the public way. The recommendation for engineering was approval. Any questions or comments on this?
I move approval. Jones?
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Great. I'm going to do a roll call, and actually, for the evening, if we can just, if people don't mind, if we'll just keep that, if Doug Jones will move a motion, unless you're really opposed to it, Doug, and Sam, if you can second it, just so that we'll just keep that flow. Again, if you're really opposed to a particular motion, let us know, we'll change that. I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Great, thank you. We have approved payment from the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department donation account in the amount of $730.72 for the purpose of, excuse me, for the purchase of grave markers and flags for Memorial Day, something that we, we see happening quite often as Memorial Day approaches.
Jones, move approval.
Patterson, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have, I think we just can't start it yet, so I'm going to, the public hearing, we can't start quite yet. It's not quite 7:30. Let's do this. Let's take a look at perhaps the, is there, the ASCI funds? Oh, did I go, I did, I went right over. I'm sorry. Perfect. So, we're going to have some slides and some discussion from Doug Brown, and this is to approve expenditure of ASCI funds in the amount of $79,445 for Phase 1 of the Mill Pond Restoration Project. So, if we could pull up those slides, thank you. And go ahead, Doug Brown.
Hey, so, being that I'm on the board of the Village Association, I'm going to go ahead and talk about this, and then I'll recuse myself from the vote, and you folks can decide if you think it's something you want to fund.
And that you were in the boat.
So, as you know, I was, yeah. So, last year, we, actually, the year before, we had requests who have UMass Dartmouth come down and study Mill Pond and find out what was wrong. Study was completed, and they recommended these steps to do the remediation. They recommended more, but these are the starting points that we're going to do. And the first thing to consider is aeration, because the pond is kind of stagnant. It's a proposal in here. And for the first year, we're going to rent, hire a professional aeration team, and we want to try out the nano bubbles, because there's a lot of talk about the nano bubbles are far superior to previous aeration. So, we don't want to go buying a nano bubble machine. We want to try it, test it out, and see how it works. So, that's the first year. And so, there's $11,000 plus or minus in there for doing the nano bubble aeration. The next thing is to do harvesting of the excessive vegetation. So, we've got a proposal in to harvest the entire pond as much as possible. They probably can't get to every area. And I don't remember the dollar figure, but you have it there in your packet, and there's additional information that was sent. So, let's see if we can scroll down. Can we advance this slide? It's some nice pictures of us. We did a harvest day, just to get an idea of whether or not it was practical to do it by hand. It was a lot of work. It was really kind of grueling, and the boats are hard to move. We couldn't even use oars. We had to make these push poles to get around. So, we determined that a volunteer group of doing it by hand is probably not practical. So, that's why we want to do the renting with the machine. I mean, hiring somebody to use the machine. We considered rent, getting the boat from Brewster. Brewster owns a boat, but we didn't want to be amateurs out there using an expensive piece of machinery in a shallow pond that has stumps and stuff, and didn't want to get into the liability of damaging their equipment. So, this year, it's hiring somebody to do the weed removal, hiring somebody to do the aeration, getting all of our facts straight, and doing the monitoring. The monitoring is a fairly expensive part at $27,000 over three years. So, that part is going to be funded either way, I mean, for the entire period. Whether or not we do this full amount of work in the next two years, you folks will decide. The next time when we come back, this is just for fully funding this one year, and we'll see how it goes, and we'll decide whether or not we need to harvest again. I know up in Brewster, they did a harvest, and they expected to have to go back every year. And in one year, they removed all the vegetation and just didn't come back. So, this will be our learning, learning experiment for the first year. But what we do know is that when we don't harvest those weeds and they drop to the bottom, they get pretty smelly, and it's been a real problem in the neighborhood. So, we're hoping to get it fixed. What else do I need to tell you? I guess, is there any questions about it?
Any questions from the board?
No, I mean, I think anybody who's been in the vicinity of this particular body of water has seen this problem kind of steadily growing worse over the years. And when you, just this picture in the background here makes you realize, you know, just that the coverage that's on that, that pond is so significant. And I know some of the things are okay, and some aren't, right? There's a difference between some of the things that are growing there, but...
Yes, some of it is natural, but, I mean, it's all natural, but the thing is, this pond is just super enriched with nitrogen and phosphorus, so it's a perfect setting for eutrophication, and it happens every year. So, the other thing this pond has going for it, as far as the permitting and the conservation, it's a man-made pond. It's not a natural pond. So, pond comm was a little bit easier on the planning for it. If we're careful and we do a good job with this, we could probably improve the water quality in Green Pond. Right now, this actually, actually is acting as a detention pond, but it can even probably do better once we take the load off of it. So, that's the current thinking about it.
Any questions for Mr. Brown about this cost breakdown and this proposal? And can you just, one question I would like just to have you speak to, because I know some folks will have, you know, wonder about, if you can just explain for the public, the ASCI funds and sort of, you know, where that money's coming from, so people understand that, that piece of it.
So, years ago, when we realized that the plumes were coming from the Otis Air Force Base, the Envir, Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence came out, and they, you know, they drilled a bunch of wells, extracted as much of the toxic stuff out of the ground as they could. We reached a certain point, and they let the rest attenuate naturally. But they knew that they had done some damage, and most of it was in East Falmouth. So, they put a fund together for future water quality improvements. And I don't know the exact amount, but I think there's maybe a million, two, or something still in the fund. So, it's used only for water quality improvements in East Falmouth. And so, we're using that because we think it's an appropriate source. Can't be used for anything else. And I think water quality may have some use for some of those funds in the future, but this time, this is a good use, I think.
And water quality, the committee's on board with this?
Yes, they are. And Eric sent a letter to reaffirm that with this package.
Great. Yes, I think we saw that. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Sue, go ahead.
Thank you. Just, not so much a question, but I remember when Doug was running the East Falmouth Village Association meeting, along with, I think, Mary Ann. Eric was in the audience. And, and as I recall, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Doug, this was really sort of a citizen-motivated concern and project. And then, you know, just the, the university study coming, this is a real grassroots experiment and really kind of service to the community. It's experimental, only in the sense that if it works well, I think it's going to really even get used more. And that, you know, I just marvel about the hand- And, you know, I, I just marvel about the hands-on attempts to just write, keep as, as much, you know, there, there is Doug and others right in the boat, in the waiters, I mean, just really looking at how much can be hands-on and, and how much needs to be funded, and, and I think the judgment and the reasons for every decision that's been made is been right on, so I'm obviously gonna support this. This is the way that village associations can really be helpful to the community, and these are how citizens can put great projects together.
Thanks, Sue.
Great, well said. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm just waiting for Doug to recuse.
Oh, yeah, Doug?
I will now move, I move approval of the funding for this project. Jones?
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And one abstention with Doug Brown, and that passes, thank you. Doug, you can come on back. That's great, and I know folks will wanna see, as this goes forward, progress with that, it'll be great.
Thank you, guys.
Just tell me if this, if you can't hear me when I do this, I'm gonna try to mute my computer, because it's, the notifications, I think, are being loud. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, but I can't hear you, so I guess that doesn't work. Okay, we'll just have to live with it. Okay, we are going to, I'll start to read the public hearing. Let me just ask, let me just see, we have everybody that we need. Okay, we have Carolyn Parker. All right, so this is notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, May 11th, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Mass, on the application of Haydam Enterprises Nye Road LLC to amend the existing license to reflect that the site has three 10,000-gallon underground storage tanks, UST, for gasoline, and one 10,000 underground storage tank, UST, for diesel located at 607 Main Street, parcel ID number 47B0504000, Falmouth, Mass, five, uh, 02540, per order of the Board of Selectmen, and this was published April 24th. Ms. Parker, if you just wanna unmute yourself.
Hello?
There you go, perfect. So, we received all the paperwork. If you just want to explain, just for the public, this is just, is it essentially correcting, correcting the license to make sure that it reads appropriately as, as to what's actually there?
Yes, basically, the last license issued was in 2000. And then, at that time, Motiva Enterprises owned the property, and it's since been sold. And when it was sold, it already had diesel in the ground. What happens with underground storage tank licenses, no one really looks for them anymore, because you get issued a registration. And that, you know, is a yearly thing that's done. The only reason we found this out is because his fire suppression, which allows him to be self-serve at the gas station, is no longer UL-listed, and we need to replace it. So, in order to do that, I have to send certain paperwork with those plans to the state fire marshal. I cannot send a license that doesn't reflect what's in the ground. So we're really, just like you said, trying to fix something that is an error, and now the license will go with the, the license goes with the landowner, so it'll now say who actually owns the land, and it'll just be updated.
Okay, I see that Sam Patterson has a question. Go ahead, Sam.
Just, just a clarification, Carolyn, in your letter to us, there was previously cited a 550-gallon tank for waste oil and a 1,000-gallon tank for fuel oil. I assume those tanks were removed by the previous owner?
Those were removed, and that's, you would have the waste oil and the fuel oil when it was actually a service station and not a convenience store. So, you know, back in the day, we had all the service bays and stuff, and that's when they would have that. Once it becomes a convenience store, those tanks are removed, and they probably remove, you know, removed correctly through the fire department and everything like that. So they're no longer in the ground.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, and I just will check to see if there's any public comment. I don't see any. If people are interested in making a comment, or asking a question about this issue, it is a public hearing, you can do so. And send that to us. Okay, so...
I'm gonna close the hearing, Jones?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I did fill out an, an actual license application, too, which...
Yes, we have that.
Yep, I signed by somebody. And once I get that, I can send the fire suppression plans to the state.
Okay, great. Mr. Jones?
I will, we close the hearing. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the hearing, by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And Brown?
Brown, aye.
Okay, and...
Jones moves that we approve this application?
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right, seeing none, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parker, appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Stay safe.
Thank you, you, too. Okay, next, we have Falmouth Farmers Market request for waiver of event permit fee and presentation of new plan. So if we could, please bring in, I think we have Lindsay Close is, is here. Yep, I see her coming up. Hi, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, how are you?
Great, good, welcome. So let me, we'll take it in two pieces. The first is something that we've seen before, which is the request for the waiver of the event permit fee, and the board has that information in front of them. I'll just give everyone an opportunity to take a look at it. Is this similar to what you were asking for last year?
Yes, yep. We usually take care of the Harbor Masters Garden, and, and a small fee on top of that, usually.
Okay. Any questions about this fee waiver request?
I would move that we grant the same fee of quaver we've done for a few years, $200 in cash and $500 in kind donation for the Harbor Masters Garden. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay, do any further discussion about that? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Okay, great. So, next, what we're gonna do is just hear from you about some of the changes you're gonna make for the upcoming season. Just to remind people, this was an event that wasn't canceled, because this is an event that it, it's really a service, it's considered part of essential, because it's food service. It's the, you know, selling of food, which is under the governor's order, one of those one of those industries that was really still considered essential. So, this was an event over the course of the summer that the permit was not canceled. The other piece that we discussed was that there were, unlike some of the other larger events, which would be a little bit hard to modify, this is an event, you know, happening each Thursday that can really be modified, and I think with some of the, the guidance that you're receiving from the state, it looks like you've put together a proposal. So if you wanna share that with us, saying, we have the documents, and we'll be able to look at them. So if you just kind of, for the public's sake, wanna give them a sense of what you're doing, that would be great.
Sure, so, in years past, at Marine Park, we've been in sort of a horseshoe shape, and our vendors have been butt up against each other, so tent to tent with minimal spacing in between. This year, we've reached out to the Harbor Master, and, because that space is also used for trailer parking, and we proposed, instead of doing the horseshoe shape, instead going in a straight line closer to the roadside on Scranton Ave. And that should allow us to have 10-foot spacing in between each tent for each of our farms and vendors that will allow, so vendors will be more than 10 feet away from each other. We will have slightly fewer vendors with that setup. We'll be down about five vendors mid-season, but we think that will be manageable as everyone's sort of having different, it's a different year, let's put it that way. We'll also have a hand sanitizer station and a hand washing station. There'll be signage reminding people to wear their mask. Vendors and farmers will be wearing masks and gloves. In addition, we will have a spacing, markers, we are looking at a grass spray paint, chalk spray paint, so people can wait six feet out from each vendor, and then approach each vendor. We're working with our farms and vendors on, on pre-packaging and pre-pricing everything that they can, so it can be a quick transaction. And really, our messaging this year is, come, shop, leave, unfortunately.
Great, thank you. And you did provide us with some really helpful sort of visuals to take a look at that. Any comments or questions from the board? Sam?
Uh, two questions. I know the handling of cash is potentially a way of transferring infection. Are you gonna be restricting the vendors to using, you know, some of the automated credit card charging methods?
We are strongly, strongly recommending credit cards, Venmo, PayPal, Apple Pay. We don't feel that we can say no cash. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'd have to check with a lawyer if that's something we can do. I don't know if we can do that. But we are strongly recommending that, and in addition, advising vendors that a round up or round down to a whole dollar amount is really the way to go, so there's not change made. So if someone does pay in cash, they could potentially put that cash in quarantine, so, so as to not touch it. One thing that we have considered, so we have a SNAP program for our neighbors that are using SNAP, and we've always had a bonus program where we match what they use. We've always used, so, let me step back one moment. So a SNAP participant can go to the farmer's, the farmer's market tent, swipe their SNAP card on the machine, and they, say they swipe for $10, we match up to $10, so they would have 40, excuse me, they would have $20 to spend at the market. In the past, we've always used wooden tokens for that. And they would go to a vendor and spend it on SNAP-approved foods, and then we would cash, we would take those at the end of the day and cash the vendors out. This year, we'll be going to a paper system, so instead of reusable tokens, it will be a one-time paper that each vendor will have a container, and the customer can put that right in the container without the vendor touching it. And then, we'll take the containers at the end of each market and quarantine them for a couple of days, and then pay out to the vendors at the beginning of the next market.
Great. And, and a great reminder that I actually, as someone who's been to that market a million times, I actually didn't know that you did that, that you did the, the match like that. So it's really wonderful, and I hope people take advantage of being able to get local, fresh products like that. That's a really great service. Sam, I saw your hand up?
Yes, I have a second question, and this one really, really should be informative, I think, to anybody else that wants to apply to us for a variance to actually hold an event. But what about restrooms? I know in the past, you've used the restrooms there near the MBS office. And I, I, you know, under the circumstances, I mean, I don't, don't think it's gonna be easy to keep those sanitized, so has anybody given any thought, and I would really defer this question to our health agent as well, for a future response. But I, I think that's an, an issue we need to address, whether, if it's not an issue, fine, I wanna hear it. But I think we should be thinking about that, because I think many times, like this one, people are gonna be there long enough, and somebody's gonna wanna go to the bathroom, and what do we do?
Yeah, so, again, it's definitely on our mind, and I've talked to a number of other farmers markets about this very question. We don't have a definite answer yet, and actually, it's something I'd like to speak to the health agent about. Primarily for our shoppers, we're, again, trying to be very clear that it should be as much of an in-and-out transaction as possible, with no eating there or anything like that, to, so we can move people through. And part of that is reminders to use the bathroom before you leave home. As a mom, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty second nature to me before we leave the house. But that, that is, that is absolutely a concern that we have as well, Sam, because we have, we have vendors who are there that will potentially need to use restrooms, so...
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're there for the entire day, so, that seems likely. So, that's a good follow-up question, thank you, Sam. But obviously, for you, Lindsay, to have with Scott McGann, and, and, and as, and I'm sure, you know, they're, obviously, they do their inspections and everything as they're going forward, so maybe we'll, we can get just some feedback from Scott, Sam, on that. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I can, I'm sure Scott can supplement as well, he's gonna be joining us at the next presentation, but I can confirm that those restrooms are intended to be available for the public, and we are exploring, working with a, a private entity that will regularly, with some regularity anyway, sanitize those restrooms, and we'll make every effort, as we know those will be used with some regularity, to keep those clean, and of course, we welcome the assistance of all, all members of the public that use them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yep, Doug Brown?
Just gonna say, that's a great idea, skipping the cash, the coins, because I, I think that the hard services probably allow the COVID to survive longer anyways, so bad enough touching the paper dollars, but let them keep the coins.
Yeah. And actually, if I could say one more thing about, so not only do we have the SNAP bonus, but I'd like to just mention that we have farmers there that participate in the Healthy Incentives Program, which is a program through the state where if you buy directly from a farmer that participates in the Healthy Incentives Program, that amount that you spend at the farmer is actually returned back to your card, so it's essentially getting fruits and vegetables for free while supporting a local farmer, so...
Great. Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions for Lindsay? Great, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye now.
Put into it, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have sort of a reoccurring issue that is going to be on our agendas as we go forward for the foreseeable future. Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Do we need any kind of vote to re...
No, we vote because we just needed for the permit waiver, she was just showing us what they were going to do. Because we didn't, that, that wasn't canceled, because it's part of essential. That was the one permitted event that wasn't canceled when we took that vote, because it provides...
It was just an update.
It was just an update, and again, for them to show that while we hadn't directed them to do so, they really, you know, took the, I think, the feeling they were getting that were concerned, and they really are running with it in terms of making it as sort of user-friendly, under the circumstances, you know, acknowledging, trying to streamline the process, so she just wanted to update us on those changes. Okay, yes, Mr. Suso?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just wanted to ask our, those who are assisting us in the broadcast to bring Scott McGann in as a panelist now. He's available as an attendee.
Great, thank you. So, as I was saying, we're going to, for a while, have an agenda item that is going to be discussion, update on COVID-19 issues. When we have very specific things that we're looking at, we will obviously break those subject matters out on the agenda. But for a while, we know that things are moving very quickly, and we wanna make sure that we leave room for us to discuss any changes that are taking place. So, welcome, Scott.
Hello.
Hi. Do you want to give us whatever update you want to give?
Yeah, why don't we start with the answer to the questions you guys just had? How's that?
Yep.
Well, yeah, so I, we need to have, restrooms aren't, aren't actually required of patrons in the food code. It's required of the food handler. So actually, the plumbing code addresses how many you would need for the public. But that being said, obviously, you'd need to have them open because we do have food handlers there. I much prefer, you know, this 48 million cases of foodborne elements roughly every year. So that's actually a much more normal thing, course of action. So we need to have restrooms open. We'll have to just increase the frequency of cleaning. I'll have to work with Lindsay, how often those should be cleaned out. But we need to have them open.
Right. You, hearing Lindsay, what she put forward, does that sound, you know, does that sound positive to you? And?
Yeah.
Great.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's still, you know, you're still, you're much, you're outside, you're much more likely, less risk than say, let's say, a small convenience store that's selling similar items. I mean, tighter we are, the more enclosed space, the more risk. So actually, to me, that's a less risky thing in the most part. Especially with the wind whipping out, a nice southwest wind in the middle of July. There's not going to be much chance that anything's going to be, that thing's going to go a mile as soon as you sneeze. It's going to be, you know, dissipated, dissipated in that.
So what kind of stuff would you like to update us on? And I know there'll probably be some questions, but any specific issues since the last time we met?
Can we start with good news? Because I'm sick of giving off bad news. All right, so the reality is right, right now, there's confirmed cases is 148. And if you notice, the numbers aren't going up very fast. Eighty-plus percent of those are out of isolation. So when you look at the numbers, you know, one of the bad things is we do have a, we did have a hit of about 10 people at the long-term care, one of the long-term care facilities, which has been most of our cases over the last couple of weeks, which is unfortunate. We do the best we can and they do the best they can to sort of limit that. Had the national guide come out and do testing and so forth. So if we go, if we switch it back to the sort of the regular population, the non, you know, people in congregate living, it's really only about a dozen or so active cases. So that's relatively a lot, a lot lower than we probably thought back in March when we were building COVID Union on, you know, on Main Street. And like Doug said, you know, Cape Cod Health Care has done a real awesome job with it. And also, we had the other one that was going up, the Joint Base Cape Cod, which actually didn't really get used much. So that's a great thing, right? So we set out for, we wait, we hope, we plan for the worst and hope for the best, and it's been towards the better.
I think we also need to thank the public because.
My next point.
Working.
Yeah, obviously, obviously, what we're doing is working, right? So that's a relatively low rate. I mean, this is, this is the tough part for us is to figure out how to open it. You know, you kind of, you know, we don't really have a game plan for this. This is not like, you know, we deal with this that often and it's trying to get the game plan right. And one of the big things we're working on is, you know, if you guys remember my background's food safety, you know, corporate food safety too, I've done a lot of that. So I'm working with some other health agents to make up, you know, how do restaurants do it? How do we want the restaurants to do? How are we going to do things differently during this? And I'll put all my ideas out there and everybody's ideas and try to get the best practice for all, everybody to use on. So I mean, we don't have a game plan for that now. So we're going to kind of invent it as we go along. You know, since I had the food background, I volunteered for that part. We got somebody working on the beach openings and somebody working on short-term rentals. And we've got groups of different health agents working on different things. And hopefully, come up with some good ideas, take the best ideas, steal the best ideas that we have.
Right. I think that's really helpful for people to hear, Scott, about that collaboration amongst health agents and health departments, really trying to, you know, everybody use their expertise on whatever it is that they, you know, focus on to kind of get those potential options out there to each community.
Yeah. Because, you know, this is, it gets to be the scary, I mean, as we get, start to come back together, I would think that the cases, cases are going to happen, right? They're not just going to keep, you know, the state's been doing well. I mean, I look at the data today, they're, they're going down, you know, and things, but it's going down slowly. And, you know, we have to at some point, you know, thread the needle and figure out how to open while still having the cases around. And that's why we're trying to make sure we get the best practices. You know, the real difficult thing is the asymptomatic.
Right. Sue, I saw you raise your hand.
Sure, Scott, I, I'm sure you're probably getting around to this. But with respect to the governor's announcement today in terms of kind of the broad framework of what's going to come out on the, the report of the 18th committee, let's call them all the expertise. Have you already started to really categorize the four steps that the governor's laid out and what it might mean to some businesses?
No, that's what we're doing as a group. So I'm taking my little spot with how to do the restaurants and things. No, I, I think there's a group that's working on that. I haven't, I just saw that today. Too far down to be honest with you.
And just so the public knows, town manager is going to gather together individuals, obviously, a health agent is one of those individuals. And Michael Kasparian from the chamber and our other, you know, the department's zoning and planning to really take a look at exactly some of this conversation, some thoughts about, you know, there's been a lot of discussion. People have talked about closing Main Street. People have talked about tents in the back of their facilities if they're only allowed to be open at, say, you know, whatever the capacity number is, 25, 50%. Obviously, there are some regulatory hurdles to some of those items. There are, you know, nothing is a silver bullet. So we're going to try to start to have those conversations, knowing that we have hopefully further guidance on May 18th from the governor.
Yeah, that's what I was doing with the restaurant. So we have different people working on different aspects. That's all going to get kicked up to the governor as sort of the best practices and let them figure out, hopefully, we get it's stuff that's real comprehensive. My guess is we'll get something that's somewhat comprehensive and then we have to detail it and tailor it to us.
Right.
That's the next step. So, you know, restaurants have been asking me about putting tents up. And, you know, I'm not opposed to anything. I'm an outside-the-box kind of guy. But, you know, without any sort of guidance from anything, it's, it's hard to really, you know, narrow it down or actually say one way or the other. Because I don't know exactly what the governor's going to say.
Right. And that there are some other, there are other impediments to some of those things too, right? You know, where they're trying to have it, how it impacts parking, there's so many moving parts. So the goal is to have that discussion. Hopefully, whatever your group of agents can put together, hopefully, like you said, we get it back from the governor, something that's comprehensive. And then we'll tailor it. Any other questions for Scott? I'm sure he has other stuff to tell us, but just any questions about what we've talked about so far?
I don't have questions for Scott, but is this the, is this the time when we should be announcing anything to business owners of what we know so far? Or is that something that we're going to do at a later time? Because it's not really on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think we, I think two things. One, it's not on the agenda. And two, we don't really know much because I think we're all still waiting for the governor to really give us some guidance, hopefully, on May 18th. I think he took a step towards that today with kind of generally speaking about phases, although it was, you know, pretty generic and broad at this point. So I don't think we have anything yet that we can, you know, we could come up with any plan we want tomorrow and say, this is what we're going to do. And if the governor has something else that overrides that, then that overrides it. So we're not, we're not there yet. But I want folks to understand that, you know, Scott's been working on this. And then we're going to also bring together relevant, you know, all the relevant departments that would weigh in on some of the suggestions and things that people have been asking about and have that conversation from the town perspective. So we're ready. We won't necessarily be ready for, to implement a plan on May 18th, but we, we've thought about it. We've, you know, worked through some of those questions and options once we hear from the governor.
Right, okay.
Julian?
Yeah, ma'am chair, I just wanted to piggyback on your comments that, to confirm, in addition to Scott's work, we have a number of staff members involved in all these regulatory processes that have been working behind the scenes as well with town council and others. So that when we do get firm direction from Governor Baker, we will be able to step forward and, and lay out what reasonable options are available to us and which are not. So we'll be continuing our discussions on that this week with an expanded group of people.
Great, thank you. Scott, anything else that is sort of on your radar that we need to know about, the public needs to know about?
Yeah, but one, one thing in terms of the business end of it, you know, normally, we would be doing inspections and we, we, obviously, you know, the opening day is X, we can't do all inspections all at once. So, you know, as a leap of faith, we've been issuing some of the permits, you know, you know, like, for example, we just had, you know, landfall come in. I know, you know, I've been to the landfall 327 times, right? So, you know, I've built up a rapport. So we're going to have them open, you know, when, you know, as long as they follow social distance. So we're not going to hold them up, you know, to go through a series of inspections and so forth. So we're ready, we're issuing as they come in. And then we'll, we'll get a bunch of people in, do all the inspections and get them done in relative quick order. That's our sort of our.
Great. And just as to what your, what your thoughts are, what you're hearing about, we're kind of a, well, not quite a weekend yet for the governor's order about wearing masks, we're weakened for our order, I guess. Time has lost sort of all meaning. I don't, I think it was a week. Any thoughts or any feedback that you're getting, any concerns from the public or?
Normally, when a new regulation comes in, there's 50 to 100 calls and that precipitously falls off. So that's exactly what's happened. So we've got a lot of, you know, initially, you got some, you know, good, bad and indifferent. A lot of people saying that they're seeing, you know, this established or that established, forcing it. I just address them as they, as they come and then they sort of taper off. And then those calls have tapered off this week. You know, complaints about the mask or not wearing. It's mostly, it's not people that aren't wearing the mask if you call us to say that, you know, Doug Brown's restaurant is not, is not enforcing the mask rule, right? That's the kind of things we'll get. And then you just reach out to them and, you know, say, Doug, make sure they're wearing the mask. And usually, they'll comply.
Great. Any questions for Scott? If we could just.
Where's, where's my restaurant?
We want to go there. Go ahead, Sam.
No, I just wanted to thank Scott for all the great work that he's done. I mean, the fact that our infection rates have come down to where they are and they're stable, you know, that just speaks world to how diligent that you've been. And I think your advice and your postings on Friday through FCTV have been very, very helpful and informative and giving us a confidence that it is about time that we could start looking at, at limited opening up of businesses. Thank you.
Thanks. I, I can't take credit for all the people that are following all the rules. So, but yeah, it's definitely.
Well, through you to all of those.
I appreciate it.
The staff at Town Hall who have been working on this in the background and continue to work on it. So much appreciated.
I think it's been, you know, for the most part, most of the feedback that we get has been positive. And, you know, until this, the last couple of weeks, we had been doing fairly well with the congregate living situ, you know, the, the facilities. I know that that's, we've had kind of a bump in the road there. But hopefully, knock on, knock on what, it's still not what we've seen at some other parts of the Commonwealth and even on the Cape. So I think people have been a really, you know, when you have that type of implementation of those safety measures, it does really trickle down in many different ways. All those folks who are coming in to give care to the individuals in those facilities are the same people who are, they have to go get groceries, they have to go run errands. So when they're not, you know, when they're following and they're not exposed or their exposure is more limited because of wearing masks and all the other measures, I think that really, you know, does make a difference. So, you know, overall, as we go forward, you know, we, we have some positives. We don't want to oversell, but we have some positives to start from at least.
Yeah, and the long term is hard because of the asymptomatic population. It's just, you know, somebody's not testing day one doesn't mean they don't test two days from then. And so that's really, really difficult for the long-term care facilities to keep. It's really got a lot, luck has something to do with it. You just don't happen to get somebody come in asymptomatic who's not showing up on the test. Some tests are showing up negative and then you test again and they're positive while that person might have worked for two days? I mean, that's just the difficulty of it. Hopefully, hopefully, short, in short order, the testing gets better and the accuracy.
Sam, you had your hand up?
Yes, I, I think we need to thank all the parents of all the children who have been, you know, quarantined to their houses because they've kept them in. And children are one way that, that COVID can pass from one individual to another. And so that has actually been a great contribution, I think, to our town. That children have been somewhat constrained, they haven't been allowed to go out and play with a lot of other children. And so it's been limited in terms of that vector of moving the infection from one person to another. So much appreciated. I know it's been tough. I've seen the wear and tear on some of the parents here in my community.
Yeah.
Poor Scott.
I have two teenagers and my oldest just got our license two weeks before the show.
Poor thing. She just drives in circles, right?
One of the, one of the, a shout out to all the seniors. I know we've done this before, but you mentioned in your neighborhood as senior, but one of my, my next door neighbor is a senior and there's a sign in front of her yard now that basically congratulates them. But it's been, it's real shame that we had to cancel that ceremony at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a tough. And we'll see as, as things go on, what, if there's something that school department is able to do as recognition. But it's a real challenge. So Scott, before we let you go, we don't want to keep you too long, but just wanted to ask your thoughts on, one of the items we have coming up is the discussion of opening up of the beaches. And again, that's another thing that we're, you know, we're starting to talk about, looking at what folks are doing regionally. But any thoughts you want to share on that before, just for us to sort of think about before you go? I don't want you to have to stay through that item.
I think, I mean, being outside, I think, is, is about as, you know, less risky as it gets. So I think, you know, having, having it outdoor, having outdoor activities is going to make this tolerable. You know, my big fear is to lock down, you know, even through Christmas and to have a blip sometime in the fall. And we've kind of just barely got out a jail card and then turn around and, you know, have to do it again. So I think we're going to, you know, look at the risks, just much like the governor opened up golf courses, right? So you have small groups, you're outside, same thing with beaches. I mean, we might have to work on certain beaches that have way more parking than they have beach space.
Right.
Right, but then you have some beaches that have very little parking and tons of beach spaces. And you have to look at each one individually and go from there. But I, I mean, I'm all for it. I think at some point, we have to sort of, with our infection rate being as low right now as it is. I think, you know, I think it's a reasonable thing to start thinking about.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Any other questions for Scott before we let him go? Great, Scott.
Good job though, thank you.
And we'll be having further discussion, obviously, about this. Thank you. Okay, we have action to consider naming Crosswalk the Tommy Leonard Walkway. And I know that we have, I think, Mr. Walworth, yep, here he is. Welcome.
Hey, Tom.
Just need to unmute?
Okay.
Welcome, Tom, how are you?
Good, how are you this evening?
Good. So we are, of all the years that you were going to do this, this you could never have imagined, right? That we were going to unveil this and of all the years, you know, it's this year. So he may be having a bit of a laugh at our expense. I don't, I don't know. Yes. So if you just want to let folks know, I'll just remind people, we have a policy that generally, when we're going to do some kind of naming event, that we have a one-year wait period between the request and then our final vote. It's at the discretion of the board. And I think we are, where are we on that timeline?
We are past the timeline. The timeline was May 7th. That was discussed, I think, July 22nd, Board of Selectmen meeting, when that came up and that was requested. I think, Julian, you discussed it when we started the process with yourself and Peter. And that May 7th was the date that was decided upon by the Board of Select.
Yes, I recall that. I think we went back words because, yeah, thank you. So we have a copy of the sign, which is really wonderful. And what is your goal for any kind of particular, you know, installation? I know you said the DPW in the paperwork has the sign.
That's correct, yes.
And so it's really ready to be installed? And what were your thoughts about any ceremony to go along with that?
It's what we know, you know, we know what we don't know. You know, there was, it's some ideas about doing something virtually and videoing it. And I think to do it justice, we would really like to have the unveiling of the sign for the crosswalk to be done in conjunction with the, the stone, the Tommy Leonard tribute we're going to have there in the entryway to Town Hall Square, basically directly across from that crosswalk in the, in the quarter deck, to have those done in conjunction. So our fingers are crossed, we have no idea when. Yeah, we're, I think we're all at the mercy of what's Governor Baker decides. And then, of course, the, the direction the town takes. But we would, the original plan was to have it done May 22nd, but we know that's not possible right now.
Great, but you, but, you know, proving this, you'll be ready to go whenever those conditions arise that we're able to do it. So that's the process that we're, we're here for tonight. Is there any, are there any questions or comments from the board? Doug Brown?
Yeah, Tom, what makes you think that you couldn't go ahead with the construction part? Yeah, uh, Tom, what makes you think that you couldn't go ahead with the construction part of it at this time?
Well, I think just to, to, to pay, you know, tribute to Tommy, um, and have the people that would like to be there, uh, be available for that. You know, with the sole current situation of no groups larger than ten allowed, I, I think that kind of precludes us from, from doing that.
But you could still do the work. You could put the stone in place and get the plaque. Would you not want to do that now and just have the unveiling later?
Well, when you, when you mean by have them in place, so have them already like in the ground and cover them with burlap or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but something we can just, I can.
Only be, only because Main Street is so quiet right now.
It certainly is. Right. And that, that was honestly, that's why we wanted to do it, you know, around May twenty, before the, before town got busy.
Right.
In the typical year.
Right.
So that's certainly something I can run by the committee and, um, um, I just, let me know who I need to close the loop with. Um, but, you know, the DPW has been very, very helpful, Peter McConerty, uh, through this, Jeremiah Pearson. Um, um, so we're, I think we'll be ready in another ten to fourteen days, uh, with the stone. And have everything ready to go. So.
We can touch base at that point to think about, you know, you can talk with your group and, and think about what possibilities there might be.
Sure.
And, and that'll be past the governor's date. So maybe we'll have some more information. Sue?
Uh, along those lines, the, um, the water steward folks did a nice thing in Woods Hole, um, on Rachel Carson. And, you know, they, they essentially, uh, put together, you know, just a, a film that really commemorated and really could be used over and over and many folks could see it. So you might just get in touch with, um, Alan or some of those folks just for some ideas. Um, and maybe do both, maybe plan a, you know, an in-person ceremony at some point. But, but at this point, you could maybe do something that maybe someone could six feet away, you know, kind of film a bit of the construction. You know, just some ideas. I'm, I'm not the creative, but the, that's just some of the nuts and bolts you could think about. And thank you for your work.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I appreciate the, the pointers and the guidance on that.
Sam?
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, a bio, commemoration bio in the newspaper would also be very valuable. It's probably going to reach more people than the actual event itself. So, you know, obviously FCTV would broadcast it, but, um, I, I would use as many media ways of explaining what this is. And especially if it's covered over, but sitting there on Town Hall Square, people will at least know what, what it's all about or what his future will be.
Sure, sure.
One of the other things that I was thinking and not to, you know, add a lot to your plate, but, you know, the road race, because they're doing their virtual, um, you know, sort of way of addressing things, you know, that it may be if you're able to put something that's, I don't know, minute or two minutes together, that sort of shows this and, and commemorates, you know, um, just his life and, and this particular recognition. It might be something, you know, because they're going to have that, that digital feedback from people who are running, who are, you know, sharing their communication, might be something that they can use to promote. Um, you know, or just share on their, on their platform.
Sure. And, and we, um, you know, Tommy Leonard was, uh, one of the co-founders along with Eddie Doyle of the Falmouth Walk. So we two are going virtual. Um, this, we're sticking with our same date of April, I'm sorry, of August fifteenth, which is Tommy's birthday. And, um, that's, uh, that's a good idea. And we do, we do collaborate quite closely with the Falmouth Road Race. Um, they're very helpful. Um, we try to help them out as well.
Yeah. Well, you just, you know, all of that, you just can't, you know, the, the walk, the road race, all of that is just so connected with, you know, Tommy and just, um, you know, his legacy of just really promoting running and, and movement. And it's something that I think people, it's in our minds now. We've had this long spring that has just never, this rainy spring. And I think everybody's just dying to literally be out in the sun and be mobile and however that, however that looks. So, um, you know, anything that you put together, we're certainly happy to help, um, get out to the public as well. I think it's a really wonderful tribute to him.
Great. Thank you very much.
One other thought that you might want to consider, but it seems to me you're going to be able to get easily a thousand remembrances from significant people of their remembering Tommy and his contributions and some of his character, characteristics and qualities as well. Uh, and that, you know, you might be able to put this, a series of those together that FCTV would like to air on a periodic basis. Different little takes about Tommy. I think it'd be a tremendous tribute to him.
Yeah, I agree, Sam. These are wonderful ideas.
Thank you so much. So we just have to, Doug, go ahead, Doug Jones.
I would move that we name the crosswalk by the quarter deck the Tommy Leonard Walkway.
Great. I have a motion. Do a second.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye. One question?
Yes.
We need to approve the stone and all, or is that wrapped up in this crosswalk?
Julian, want to speak to that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, my memory is that you, you approved the installation of the, uh, monument at a past meeting.
Okay.
Because it was not a naming function, as is the, uh, naming of the pedestrian walkway. So that has been approved and the site has already been marked by, uh, Tom and his colleagues in anticipation of that monument being installed, uh, with the assistance of Public Works.
Great. Thank you.
It was approved on March ninth at Portal, Board of Selectmen meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Definitely. And I, we have the Falmouth Walk. I'd like to thank, you know, Julian Suso, Peter Johnson, Stab, uh, the DPW and the Board of Selectmen for their guidance and recommendations during this, uh, naming process. Uh, everybody, it's just been, it's just been wonderful. Everybody who I've talked to, worked with has been nothing but helpful. It's great. Thank you very much.
A spot in their heart for Tommy. So we're so glad somebody's taking this project on and, uh, we can't wait to hear from you. Let definitely touch back with the town manager's office once the stone is ready and we can kind of think about timing from there.
Very good, Megan. Thank you very much.
There's going to be a lot of visitors taking pictures under that sign.
I'm thinking the ball cap on top is always going to have a polished side on it, right?
Bring your own Red Sox cap.
I think it's safe to say that Tommy helped put Falmouth on the map.
Definitely.
For sure. For sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good luck.
Appreciate it. I know.
Next we have. Um, update on the proposed recovery loan program. Mr. Suso, do you want to start that off? And I know that Frank Duffy, Town Council is present, who can share some, um, information, I believe he shared with the board. Um, so if you just want to sort of set the stage, Mr. Suso, that would be great.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know, I see that Frank is with us also as a panelist now. Um, the, uh, the board has a copy of a, in your packet of a memorandum from Frank Duffy, which, uh, you had requested, um, at your, uh, meeting a week ago, uh, that Frank, uh, uh, provide additional information. Uh, to, and continue his research and analysis. Uh, and he completed, uh, the, the portion of it that is concluded now, it is still a work in progress. I'll let Frank summarize that, but you have a copy of the, uh, memo that Frank transmitted to Michael DiGiano, the executive director of the EDIC, which elaborated a bit further on the items that Frank discussed a week ago. So, uh, if it's agreeable, Madam Chair, I'll defer to Frank for his summary comments as well.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Frank. I'm sorry. Welcome, Frank. Go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, so, uh, the last time I spoke to you, I, I mentioned that we would be contacting the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services for their read on the situation. Um, and I did, um, I sent them an email, um, describing the situation. They also happened to, uh, read about it in the, as it was your meeting the last week, reported in the newspaper. But, um, the Department of Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services has basically, uh, uh, reported their assessment is that the recovery loan program is presented to you by the Falmouth EDIC, uh, needs to be squared with the relevant statute before it can go forward. Now, I just take this minute to tell everybody who the, um, Division of Local Services is. This is a, an office within the Department of Revenue that oversees the, uh, revenue and the financial health of all of the cities and towns in the state. These are the people who, for example, certify our free cash. This is the money we spend every year at the November town meeting. They also are the people who set our tax rate so that we can prepare tax bills and send them out to property owners around town. So whenever the Division of Local Services or the Department of Revenue has weighs in on a, a matter of, of financial importance to the town, it behooves us to pay attention to, to their recommendations. Um, the, as I reported to you last week, the, the EDIC is a creature of statute. It's chapter one twenty-one C of the general laws. And the EDIC being a, uh, a special purpose organization is limited to the specific powers that is granted to it in the general laws. Now, uh, as the, uh, the staff attorney for the Department of Revenue, uh, said that the, when the law was created for the EDIC, it was basically envisioned as having sort of a redevelopment function. And therefore, all of the powers it has more or less relate to redevelopment type activity. Uh, the purpose and intent and the mechanics of the recovery loan program as it exists or as it's been presented to us are kind of, uh, they are outside the limits of, uh, chapter one twenty-one C and therefore currently beyond the authority of the EDIC. Now, that doesn't mean that all is lost because certainly the legislature has the power to grant a special act to the Falmouth EDIC to allow them to create the recovery loan program and to carry out the purposes as they envision. But, uh, as I reported in the memorandum, which I sent to the EDIC last Friday, uh, this is the recommended course of action. I did receive a, uh, email back from Mike DiGiano, the, the executive director of the EDIC, saying that his board was undertaking a review of this and they'd be getting back to me. Now, I didn't hear it today, but they really only had a couple of days to think about this. The special legislation will solve the problem that had, that the EDIC has about establishing and running the recovery loan program. But there's a second problem, and that is the town's contribution. And, uh, the town's contribution runs against the same impediments, really. Um, there is a provision in the Massachusetts Constitution which provis, prohibits the use of public funds for private purposes. Um, and also this is, um, not necessarily one of the purposes for which the town can appropriate money because it would be setting up a fund that would be loaning money to private purposes, for the private parties for private purposes. So, uh, I am going to be meeting with, uh, Julian Suso, the town manager and Jennifer Mullin, the finance director this week. We're going to discuss how, uh, we as a town can go forward to cure that impediment to our participation. And it, and it may very well be that the answer for us is also special legislation. Now, in terms of how we will file a special legislation, I'm going to defer to the advice of our legislators uh, and say, how do we do this and get it done expeditiously? Um, and we'll have a report on that when I hear back from them.
Frank, I really want to thank you and, and, um, and, you know, the other town staff that have been working on this. It's obviously, um, a, you know, sort of new look at, um, you know, really a new look at something that hasn't been done and that the, uh, statute doesn't allow for. But we really, um, you know, I think people really appreciate the fact that the town is, you know, just doing a deep dive to see if it's possible, what would be required. And then we can, you know, discuss that once we have a better sense of, uh, really what, um, some of those challenges would be, um, which you've laid out, I think, in part tonight. Um, but it's really something that just, it's, it's novel. So, um, you know, we, we are thankful that we have that guidance from, um, uh, Department of Revenue. That's really helpful. Um, and I think helps shape the conversation as we go forward. But really appreciated all the work that's been done on this.
We also have an issue of the, just generally speaking, the, when, when the legislature passes the general laws, and as you know, there are volumes and volumes of them, uh, they think of a lot of things, but they never really thought of a pandemic. Uh, and they never really thought of the situation that we're in today. So earlier tonight, you were talking about what can you do to accommodate the restaurants that are opening? They want special considerations with respect to their liquor licenses and seating outdoors and so on and so forth. Again, you run up against impediments because the general laws never really anticipated this. So we're trying to find a way to deal with this at the same time, comply with the law, and it's quite a challenge.
And, and my guess is, um, which is something I think you, you've pointed out, is that these may be the same questions. I mean, you know, they really are, maybe not the, um, EDIC proposal, but all of these other regulatory issues, every community is going to be, um, really having some of these similar conversations, particularly the, the communities that are, um, you know, based on that summer tourism, of which there are many, um, you know, Cape Cod and beyond. So, yeah, I think that, you know, discussion at the state level, um, probably is going to pick up as we get to the next phase. Um, I saw Sam and then Sue and then Doug Brown.
I just wanted to, uh, mention IRE's contribution to analyzing, you know, the validity of their proposal. Because I thought it was excellent and it came really before your conversation with the Department of Local Services as well. I thought she did an excellent job of looking at the, uh, and the soundness and the, or the lack of it and give us, giving us a nice interpretation. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sue and then Doug Brown?
Sure. I, I just want to, um, speak to a couple of points. One is that Falmouth is in a unique situation to really be shovel-ready for this, um, potential level of assistance if we can move forward the legislative work quickly enough. So that I think is a, is an optimistic possibility, you know? And, and it's also in the tradition of, of Falmouth, first of all, based upon the town manager and, and, uh, finance directors' hard work, as well as the work of this board and, and the taxpayer support and the voter support. Um, we had reports that we're in a good financial situation in general. And I know there's more of that information that's going to be reported out. But with this, um, it, it's really an incredible, um, conflagration here that we happen to have the, the smart solar work that was done and therefore the participatory funding might be available. So, eh, you know, and then we have town council, um, that, who is right now laying out the roadmap to how this can be done. And it comes at a point in time when the adaptations that small businesses will have to make for COVID are expensive. I mean, these are folks who have lost business, who have lost employees, and now they're going to have to make further investment to move forward if they, if and when they are opened up. So, you know, there's some, there certainly are some hurdles, but I, I think, um, if anyone can do it, Falmouth can.
Doug Brown?
Is there any, um, any way of rewriting the lease agreement with the landfill site with the solar on it that would avoid the special legislation? Can we more clearly separate the property and let the EDIC manage that parcel more completely that would help us?
Uh, well, possibly, but I frankly have not thought of that, um, that question. You're the first person to raise it. I'm, I've been dealing with the structure of the, uh, transaction as it presently exists.
Okay.
And I just want to raise one issue, um, that, uh, I, you know, I had a conversation, um, Joe Netto called to just kind of raise his concern. And I just want to put it as part of this conversation because I think it's shared by others. Um, you know, and he really was focused on, um, the, the fact that, you know, he really felt town meeting had made decisions about this particular project and the allocation of funds that they knew would come from it um, for a particular purpose. So he was uncomfortable with the proposed plan of this nature based on the fact that, um, you know, he really felt it would undo, um, sort of the intent of a town meeting vote that had taken place. So I just want to put that as we go forward, um, and discuss, um, any possible, uh, you know, uh, progress with this. I think it's a, a concern that's shared by, you know, certain number of individuals that this is, um, you know, something different than what town meeting had originally voted, um, for around this particular project. So just to put that on the record, he did reach out to me and asked me to share that. Um, Doug Jones?
Is there any chance the project can move forward for the loan without using this funding? Is there a chance that the, I remember at the last meeting, the EDIC is a five oh one three C. So there is a possibility that private grants could be providing the repayment and the town not be involved in it at all. And that would be one way of moving forward if we were able to have the EDIC do that kind of fundraising instead.
The problem, uh, is the EDIC getting involved in this in the first place. Um, it, it's really beyond their enabling act.
I understand that, but if we're separating the two issues, the money is one issue and the special legislation is a different one. If they can get the special legislation to be given permission to it, and then money doesn't come from the town.
I know, I'm not sure that would solve the problem, Doug, because as I said, the, the problem is the EDIC has certain authorized powers and do- problem is the EDIC has certain authorized powers and duties and the recovery loan fund as presented by the EDIC doesn't square with their authorization. But it's something that is curable, but has to be done, in my opinion.
I just want to mention, I know we're all looking for ways to support these businesses and their employees. And I know that at least a couple of the regional banks are trying to provide loans to these businesses. Now, there's always the question of risk, you know? If they go out of business, how does the bank get its money back, right? So there's more of a loan guarantee issue here in my mind than anything, but there are institutions that are trying to help out the businesses. Lives of credit and long-term notes that they can pay or loans that they can take back. So there is work going down the guard and I know because I've, I heard the, the discussion of one of the, the local regional, I should say, one of the regional banks and efforts that they're actually undertaking in order to help some of the businesses in town.
Well, that's right. I, and local banks, of course, can go ahead and do that. They're free to engage in any legitimate banking activity. But the recovery loan program as it was presented to us a couple of weeks ago, basically takes public money and uses it to protect banks from the losses in the event the loans go south. And that's frankly a problem that's got to be overcome.
And so just so we're clear going forward, Mr. Suso, are you going to sort of, along with Frank, direct some of that conversation, that continued conversation with EDIC and with our, with Jennifer Mullin and then kind of get back to us about that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think in, in Frank's memo, he suggests that the EDIC might be well positioned to explore that special legislation issue and that Frank would work with us on the matter of the appropriation issue. We could blur the lines and take on additional things, but that was the suggestion made. My understanding is that in the response from Mr. DiGiorno, that they were going to move in the direction that Frank had suggested. So we're certainly happy to play a role in that.
No, I, I think that's great as long as, obviously if our state legislators have questions about sort of the commitment or the, you know, whatever the town's position is, they certainly will reach out to us. We, we have, you know, really great back and forth with our state legislator. So that, I think that Frank's suggestion is on point. So excellent. So we'll have a further update as time comes, as time goes on. Any other questions from the board or comments? Frank, thank you very much. Really appreciate the work that you and I are doing. Thank you. Okay, next we have a discussion of town meeting article 14, which is the override to address the hiring of eight new firefighters. And Peter, are you going to sort of start the conversation off or Julian?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I just interject, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We want to bring Jennifer Mullin in as a panelist as well. Peter's going to provide the summary PowerPoint on this issue. We look forward to a discussion with the board.
Great, thank you.
So, good evening. First, I just want to make sure that you all are seeing the slide override to hire eight firefighters. Is that on our screen now? Terrific.
Yes, it is.
So we, we thought it would be helpful to present a brief overview of the override that is appearing on the election ballot for the May 19th election. This is prompted really mostly because we had a few questions from residents and voters that normally I think would have been addressed at town meeting. And we are out of sequence this year because of the COVID-19 situation. As the board is aware, the town meeting was scheduled for April preceding the May 19th election, but that spring town meeting has of course been postponed. So there really wasn't the benefit of a discussion at town meeting, which, which is televised and generates some media to help build understanding of what the override is about. So that was the, the impetus for this overview and, and I'll just jump right into it. So question one on the election ballot is an override to hire eight firefighters and an override is an authorization to increase taxes, to increase the tax levy on a permanent basis for a specific purpose. In this case, it is to hire eight firefighters and to pay for the wages and benefits of those eight firefighters. This override was the result of frankly, a couple of years of conversations with the, the board and the community. It was ultimately proposed by the Board of Selectmen to improve the effective response of the fire department to the entire town and to improve the safety of our firefighters as well. It was addressed at a public forum on January 21st at the high school auditorium and also at a joint meeting of the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen on February 25th at the Herman Room. So as I mentioned, we're, we're out of sequence. We have the, the ballot vote coming up on May 19th and it is a two-step process. Approval of an override of the property tax levy under proposition two and a half requires both a meeting, sorry, a vote of town meeting to authorize the expenditures for the purpose of the override and then it also requires approval of the voters at an election to authorize the additional taxes for that specific purpose. So this is the exact wording of the override as it appears as question one on the election ballot and I will just read it if I can get the whole screen to show. Shall the town of Falmouth be allowed to assess an additional $971,507 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of funding the salaries and benefits of eight firefighters for, sorry, salaries and benefits of eight firefighters for the fiscal year beginning July 2020? One of the questions we received is why doesn't it say on the ballot that this is an override? And the reason is because the state has determined exactly what the wording of override questions must be on the election ballot. What's on the screen now is a verbatim copy from a guidance document issued by the Department of Revenue with respect to the wording of ballot questions. And as you can see, that, that wording is prescribed and we have followed that, that language. So that's, you know, I think the language, the meaning of it is as clear as it can be in a, in a concise way. It does say that it's additional real estate and personal property taxes and, and the purpose for which it is to be spent. This is the recommendation of the finance committee that is printed in the town meeting warrant book that the town will vote to appropriate $971,507 for the purpose of funding the salaries and benefits of eight firefighters. And that is contingent upon voter approval of the passage of a proposition two and a half override ballot question. And then it cites the, the chapter and verse of the general law. So that's the logistics that we wanted to cover just to make clear why the, you know, why the order is what it is. I should say, I should note that it is not at all unprecedented for the election to precede the town meeting vote. In fact, there are towns that on a recurring basis have their town election before town meeting. So if the override were to be approved at the election and by town meeting, it clearly would meet the legal requirement for approval.
Yeah, I, I think your point is well taken, Peter. I think for, and the reason why we're doing this and I, you know, thank you for putting this together because it's very informative and just condenses a lot of information. I think the, the key point is that it's just such a different protocol for the town of Falmouth. So, you know, usually we're used to that vetting, that deep conversation, that extensive debate at town meeting, which I think helps to inform the public, you know, when they go and make their vote. I mean, I think about the, you know, all the debate that we had about the turf field and that went on for a long time. And I think that town meeting discussion and, you know, anything that we vote at town meeting, whether it's to do with potential overrides or not, the discussion at town meeting then kind of permeates throughout the community. It makes it into the media, people have those conver, conversations. So, you know, part of why we, you know, talked about putting something like this together is because we're, we're not going to have that, the benefit of that this year. So really to, to just put the, the information out there so that folks can understand exactly what this is about. And this information, if you will, correct me if I'm wrong, this will be on or already is on the town website?
That's, that's correct. The, well, the, the slide presentation will be, will be put up on the website. But we also have on the town meeting section of the website under current town meeting. I think it, it's the page is current town meeting and then there's a section, next town meeting. And there's a somewhat more detailed fact sheet on article 14. So there is some information there as well.
Maybe if we can just think about where we put it on the website for folks who are not correlating the vote with town meeting.
Right.
You know what I mean? So in other words, if people are coming to the town website to find it, not really thinking about it as a town meeting issue, but as an election.
Right, right. Yeah, we will definitely give that some thought as well and, and try to make it as prominent as we can.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board? Peter, did you have further or Julie?
If you like, I just, I just had a couple more slides.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I didn't want to, no, no, not at all. Your, your comments are very timely. So not to get too far into the weeds necessarily because we all know that there was quite a bit of thought and discussion and community dialogue that went into this, but just very broadly, why do we need eight more firefighters? These eight firefighters provide two additional firefighters for every 24-hour shift, seven days a week. And that is in part needed because calls have nearly doubled over the past 20 years. And additionally, we are implementing effective July 1, a new requirement that every engine and ladder deployed from the fire department must have at least two firefighters. That's something that we've been working toward for quite some time. We've added addition, seven additional positions over the past five years without an override, but need still these eight additional positions in order to bring the staffing level from 14 at the start of shift to 16 in order to make that the most effective deployment we can at the existing five stations. And the adding that increase, the minimum staffing at the start of shift truly improves effective response for the entire town. What will it cost? The tax impact of the proposed override would be eight cents on the tax rate. The increase in the tax bill for a home with a median assessed value of $378,000 would be $30.24 per year. And again, that is a permanent override of the tax levy. So it is unlike a debt exclusion, which the increase is temporary and disappears after the debt is paid. For an operating override such as this, it is a permanent increase of the tax. And, and that's, that's it.
Great. Questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Peter. That's really helpful. Okay, Jennifer, did you want to speak to any of those issues? Still on mute. It's the Aurora Borealis is hearing with her.
I go through this all, I'm sorry. This is, um, no, we just wanted to just answer some questions because there has been some confusion, particularly, you know, because the ballot, I think it started with the wording on the, on the ballot and it doesn't say override. So we wanted, you know, we have to use that wording. Frank was great and he answered some questions, but you know, then we decided at that point, maybe we come back to the board and just, you know, answer those questions. And that's really what we wanted to do. And just, you know, if any questions have come up from the board, you know, I'm happy to answer.
I saw Sue, did you have your hand up?
Yes, please. So questions that I've been getting from folks is that obviously with COVID, a lot of things are looked at differently. And before their folks vote on this issue, they want to be sure the town can afford it because of, you know, just general financial concerns of, of where the town's going. So one question is, you know, what are the financial difficulties do you anticipate? Kim, you know, just a general picture in that regard is, is sort of part one. Part two is I get a lot of questions about safer loans. What is the update? Have we looked at that again? So those two updates, please.
Okay, well, I can speak to affordability. Since this is an override, really the question is, is do you want to increase your taxes to pay for these eight new firefighters? So it's not fighting with any other services and it doesn't change what I presented to the board a couple of weeks ago and what we are looking at the FY21 budget and maybe not putting money into reserves for a year. You know, we're still looking at that daily. So this really is, do you want to pay thirty, you know, for a median house of $378,000, do you want to pay $30 a year for eight new firefighters? So to the question of affordability, the taxpayers will need to answer that question when they go to the ballot box. And then again.
Clarify on, on that. So we, we don't have to worry about being able to afford trash collection contract, for example, if we, you know, just we have, we're, we're not in, in a position, because I know we just talked about roadway projects and we've kind of scaled some back for, you know, one reason or another. And, and I think the question comes, you know, from concerns like that.
Yeah, no, you bring up a good question. So it just, I look at it and it's just my financial brain, if you will. I look at it really as two separate issues because we're having an override to increase the tax base for the eight new firefighters. We're not decreasing trying, it's not, we're not decreasing services to fit in the eight new firefighters. If you remember when I presented the budget back in January, we had presented a balanced budget with projected revenues. And the question came to me, well, we want to hire eight new firefighters. How do we do that? Well, we couldn't put it in the budget. We would have had to cut the budget back in January in order to fit the eight new firefighters in. And it was decided at that time that we would go for an override. Do you want to increase your, your taxes $30 a year for eight new firefighters? And that's where that money's going to, so they will pay extra for the eight. Now, the question about trash pickup and what does the future look like with COVID-19 really is a separate conversation. And it comes back to what I said a couple of weeks ago. I'm keeping an eye on the revenue. I look at it daily. FY20, the year that, and I know other communities are cutting their budgets. They've furloughed, more communities are furloughing. The budget year that we're in, we will meet our estimates and we will exceed them. I'm not sure how well we'll exceed them, but we will be able to do that. We won't be in a revenue deficit. We won't have to raise money to balance the budget year we're in. So we're, we're good there, but what will happen is it will lessen our free cash. And because it will lessen our free cash, we are a little bit more tight on capital projects because we use free cash for one-time funding. So really, the financial health of the town is a conversation that we're going to continue to have and I will be back again in June to balance this fiscal year. And when we decide when we're going to have town meeting, we will have some recommendations for next fiscal year. So the firefighters don't fight with, this eight new firefighters don't fight for those financial services.
And that's a part of the question.
Okay. And then your second part of the question was, can you repeat that again?
For safer grants.
Oh, the safer grants, that's correct. Okay, so with safer grants, the first year I believe is 75% and then it declines and then the third year it's 35%. And what we would be doing if we applied for safer grants is we're saying we'll have 75% of those firefighter salaries in next year's budget. Well, we're going for the override. You can't have both. My concern particularly now with the financial health of, you know, of, you know, the, you know, the world actually, you know, I want to go from, you know, the town to the state to the federal government. But with the uncertainty that we face, it's concerning to apply for a safer grant to say in year two or year three, we need to fund that fully, eight new firefighters, where we wouldn't be able to put eight firefighters in our budget in one year. Because you're really saying right now, we're going to put that into our budget in three years and especially with the uncertainty with revenues, how long will we be in a recession? How long is it going to take us to pull out of this? What is next summer going to look like? How fast will we recover? It's kind of hard to answer that now and make a commitment today for the future of two or three years of firefighters. And if the override passes, we won't be having that discussion on the safer grant. And then the safer grant, when we have open positions, and I think we have three right now in the fire department, we have to fill those first before we can use the safer grant money. And you are, and you can only, there's a time period within the safer grant when you hire the firefighters. And another question I would have is with the academy shutdown right now. But my biggest concern is really binding the town to a future budget increase, you know, in, in two or three, you know, really year one, two and three, 25% but increasing. We're really uncertain, you know, you don't, then you would be You know, you don't, then you would be fighting firefighters against services. Then you would be looking at, well, I made this commitment for eight new firefighters. So now let's look at, you know, what services you might want to cut. And I don't really think, I know I wouldn't make that recommendation right now.
Doug and then Peter, Doug Jones and then Peter.
So the $30.24 per year, would that go into effect for 2021? Because we're not going to start paying them until January? So is that the full amount? Is actually for next year, would it only be $15 per household? And then the year after would be 30 or potentially even next year less? Because if the academy is closed, we're not going to be hiring any of these guys until February, March. So it could be that next year is actually a fairly cheap year, but the year after, that's going to be the more expensive year.
Yeah, you bring up a good question, Doug. Since that's really, the override is the revenue source. So we would be raising the taxes for the full year for FY21 because we have to put it on the tax rate. We just can't raise, you know, part of it, particularly since we'll be raising that money and the money that we raise on the taxes equals the appropriation of Article 14. So you have to have that and, you know, you, you'll raise the full amount next year and then you have the appropriation. However, if you don't spend that full appropriation, that will be turned back to free cash and then you'll have the full appropriation the year after that.
So the money does not have to be used for the firefighters for fiscal year 21?
Yes, it does. I can't use it for anything else. So it would just be a turn back. It would be an unspent budget.
Can we go back to free cash?
Yes.
Well, I saw Peter, one thing I would just note, and I thought Sue Smith, when we, when the finance committee and the board met jointly several months ago, I thought she made a great point, which was one of the concerns that finance committee had in terms of the safer grants. You know, I think her, I'm just paraphrasing, but you know, she said, you really don't fund long-term positions with grants because you get into exactly that potential conundrum, which is, you know, the grant, you're really, you know, you're, you're kind of at the mercy of whether that grant goes forward. You know, there's no guarantee that those monies are there, which I think is what Jennifer was getting to. And, you know, as the state coffers sort of tighten, as some of those funds from federal sources and state sources change over the next year or two, we don't control that. We, to the extent that we, you know, control our own finances in our town, you know, obviously much more sort of control over that than we have as to what kind of money comes down the pipeline to support those positions. You know, we're talking about eight firefighters. And I think the concern that finance committee noted, which is a bit of what Jennifer's talking about is, you know, you're committing, if you commit and you do that with the safer grants and that, you know, the money is going to run out, period. Even if the state coffers are overflowing, because that's how the grant works, it stops. And so, you know, it's even if we were to get those grants, those grant funds, we're still talking about a period of time when we're incorporating eight firefighters into our budget. And so 100%. So I mean, that doesn't get over the difficulty we have with those finite resources without that, that override. So I think that was a point that finance committee raised, Sue Smith in particular, the concern about funding permanent positions with grants, especially that number of positions. Peter, I think you had your hand raised.
You essentially just made my point. It occurred to me as Jen was talking that I was reminded of some of Jen's previous remarks when she tells us that we don't use one-time money for recurring costs. And the grant is not one-time money. It's sort of, it's three-time money, sort of, but it's only 33%, 35% in the last year. So, you know, the bottom line is it's temporary funding for a permanent cost. And when you're talking about something on the order of magnitude of, you know, that we're talking about almost a million dollars, that's just, you know, something we can't take the risk of trying to figure out three years from now how we're going to pay for that.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I think the summary that was in our packet about how we got to this point was very well written. And if we could, I don't know if that's on the website, it should be, because it really encapsulates the whole situation. Our number of calls has increased over 20 years. We've been constantly adding to the fire department, but we can't keep up and we're far behind. And we're underserved right now and it's a dangerous situation for the guys that are working. So I think that I felt like it was a really good explanation of where we're at. We asked the chief a couple of years ago, what's it really going to take to make your department whole? And he said, give me a chance to think about it and I'll come up with the real number. And now he has. So now we see it. That's just reality.
Yes, Julian.
Madam Chair, just to emphasize that, this information sheet to which Selectman Brown just referred, and as we noted, it is on the town website. It was also transmitted to all town meeting members, for which we have a, an email address. So we continue to make all efforts to get that factual information out. That is a multi-page summary. And so we welcome any that have any questions to follow up on the town website. And if they ask about Article 14 information sheet, they'll go right to that location and can read that summary as well.
Great. And if folks are having trouble finding it, obviously just, you know, let us know and that can be sent to you. If you have a hard time navigating, it's already an attachment that's been sent out. That's easy to do. I think it's a really great resource. So thank you to all the folks who put that together. And, you know, again, we'll, we'll continue if it is something that is voted on by the residents of the town. Obviously, the process is it still has to go to town meeting. So there'll be further discussion. Jennifer, could you just speak to that point? Remind us, and I know you talked about it, but just remind us if, if it's a positive vote at the election and then town meeting votes to appropriate those funds, correct?
Yeah. So if you get a positive vote at the election and then we move on to town meeting and town meeting will discuss and vote. And if they vote positively, then you have the override, you're all set. If you get a negative vote on the ballot next week, then discussion's over. You won't even move the article at town meeting.
Right.
Because the town meeting article is contingent on a two and a half override.
Right. Great. Okay. Any other comments? Thank you. We really appreciate it and hope folks, if they have any confusion, reach out to us to clarify where we go from there. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have sort of as our last substantive issue for the evening, a discussion of the potential regional approaches to upcoming summer beach operations. And this is, we touched upon this with our health agent, Scott McGann. It, it is going to get nicer someday. And we know that, you know, folks are already visiting and, you know, we anticipate that the beaches, they're already being used for people to walk on them and people are sitting on them and enjoying them, even though the parking lots are closed. But clearly we are, we need to have a plan as we go forward. Still waiting for some guidance from the governor, but we really need to have a plan that's very specific, in particular to Falmouth, to our, you know, all of our very unique beaches and some of the challenges that each one of those beaches presents. So Julian, I didn't know if you had anything in particular you want to start the conversation off with. I think the goal for tonight, and we're not going to have a plan that we're going to come out with tonight. The goal is to talk about, from my perspective at least, some of the thoughts, concerns, challenges that we know we're going to have. And, and then the discussion will obviously continue further with the relevant departments and committees. And then maybe, you know, the hope will be to bring back some possible suggestions to this board for a vote or a discussion in the near future.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to, I really want to emphasize that this is another topic that we have been reviewing internally and attempting to gather information. But what we want to emphasize is that we have an extraordinary amount of staff expertise and experience in managing beaches. And we're going to take, you know, we're going to make full use of that experience and expertise in, in drafting a, you know, an expanded beach operation and municipal parking plan. And what we anticipate also is that it is likely to be rolled out collaboratively in close parallel, at least with our other communities in Cape Cod and certainly ones that are significant coastal communities. What we are awaiting, as you've noted and others have as well, is some definitive direction from Governor Baker. We are highly confident that the governor, as part of the governor's advisory board, which will be releasing a plan on a week from today, Monday, April, pardon me, Monday, May 18th, the plan will be released. The governor talked a little bit about that today in his press conference. He's going to continue to talk about it along with the lieutenant governor in the days to come. But there's a fair amount of work to be done. But he is, it's anticipated that among the many things that will be rolled out will be suggestions and guidelines for managing beaches and the public use of beaches, including parking areas. As the board will recall, the governor's emergency order, a couple of days after the town of Falmouth closed our municipal beach parking lot, the governor's order was issued, which shut down all state parking lots serving state beaches. And that shutdown continues. And we anticipate opening up the town's municipal parking areas, which as the board is aware, were only temporarily closed for the purpose of dealing with the, you know, imminent crisis of COVID-19, the dangers of significant group interactions and gatherings and things related to that. And so we'll be working closely in parallel with the governor's guidelines and other communities in our area. A health agent, Scott McGann, and of course, working closely with this board or the selectmen in making all that available in the days and weeks to come.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Sue, I saw you had your hand up.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that I've been seeing is, first of all, there is a special counsel that Senator Seer has put together with respect to a Cape Cod view of all of these issues. So I think it would be important to continue, and I'm sure the town manager is as well, to really have open communication with folks. It includes Wendy Norcross, Cape Cod Chamber. So lots of views in, in terms of Cape-specific issues, beach-specific issues will be part of that. And then I know as well that a lot of communities are really circulating draft guidelines. And just in terms of, well, if the governor makes a decision that goes this way, we want to be prepared, just to staff up. I mean, it, you know, in terms of these, this will be new, new guidelines. What we, you know, we, we tend to, as, as the summer gets closer, we, we always talk about enforcement issues and how difficult it is for, you know, for our beach staff, whether it's, you know, parking folks or lifeguard folks and what their roles and responsibilities are. And it seems to me that, you know, the COVID, it's kind of adds another layer of challenge to that. So, you know, I think generally speaking, and I'm sure these are all things that the town manager's staff are, are looking at right now, which is, you know, what, you know, how would we staff up? And in terms of what sort of, you know, just, there was an incident with ice cream in Mashpee. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a sort of pressurized situation for a lot of folks. It's new for a lot of folks. So I guess, I, I think, you know, with the time moving forward, I think it would be great, as much as we can do all that research and, and look at what other communities are thinking. I, I think the town manager's suggestion about, you know, having, when it's possible, a cohesive amount of rules so that our, you know, visitors or, or just folks in, in town who do want to take advantage of the beaches, what are common rules and what, you know, what might be specific? So that was just one thought I wanted to have the town manager address.
Certainly happy to comment on that further. I do want to underscore that the town of Falmouth has a a more significant level of seasonal staffing than probably any other community on the Cape. And again, the, the town's expertise and experience relates closely to that. And it's no accident that by and large, we have a very significant number of lifeguards return year after year after year to work for the town of Falmouth because of the, the quality of work that gets done here and the camaraderie and the experience and expertise that's reflected in the job that we do all across the board, whether it's our staffing, our, our leadership, or public works, maintenance and assistance there. So I do want to underscore to the board that we are moving forward, as we do in any other year, with all preparations for hiring of seasonal staff and reasonably overseeing the influx of residents and visitors that are going to be using our beaches as we do every year. We will, and have had some modest discussions that will be expanded on fine tuning the training that we have, whether it's for lifeguards or for municipal parking lot attendants or others that are so important to that overall effort. Because within the context of the guidelines that we have from the governor, that will likely cause us to have to fine tune the details of how we approach things like municipal parking and beach use and social distancing. There may be a question about group size on beaches. Don't know whether the governor is going to address that directly or not. We'll have to see. But the good news for us is that we have an extraordinary group of seasonal employees that return year after year, that bring in with them a great amount of experience so that we don't climb the learning curve new every year. And, and working with our superintendent Beach Magardo and, and our acting beach superintendent Maggie as well. And Maggie, I apologize, I forget, I'm forgetting your last name. I know I've worked with you for several years and, and you were one of the welcome individuals that we have return each year to assist us in ensuring expertise and continuity in the way that we manage beaches. So I am very comfortable that we are as prepared as any other beach community and that we will have the proper staff and oversight and support for getting the job done and serving the residents of the Falmouth community and our visitors as well.
Sue, did you have another comment?
Just that I, I think as we follow up and we have more information at the next meeting, it might be informative to have the chief of police and to be able to provide his view. Thank you, Megan.
So one, one thought, I'm just going to, I'll just throw a couple of things that I hope that we think about. And I do think it will be a conversation that we have with, you know, beach, DPW, police. You know, it's obviously, it's across the board discussion. But, you know, one of the things, you know, the, I think the first, the first department that I ever looked at when I was on finance committee was, was the beach department. So it's lots of deep diving into the way that, that department works. But, you know, I know that there's a couple of things that will be helpful in my mind. One is to think about the different times of the day because different times of the day mean different things at the beaches. You know, we've generally, you know, the lifeguards go off the beach at the end of the day. That means something very different for a lot of our west-facing beaches where people want to go and see the sunset. You know, if you ever go to Old Silver or Chappie at sunset, there's not a square inch of sand. So, you know, thinking about how we look at the ebb and flow on our beaches throughout the day and how we might do something different at different beaches. So again, sort of when not in Bristol, you know, you can go there at five or six, and unless it's an incredibly hot day, that beach starts to empty out because the sun is moving and it's a little bit chillier. You know, you, like I said, you get over towards Old Silver, Chappaqua, it's a completely different situation. So I think we need to look at our beaches independently and look at the timelines that, that, that we may have a different plan in place. You know, maybe we have parking lot attendants who stay at some of those west-facing beaches a little bit longer to help with some of those issues. I mean, maybe we involve, maybe there's a police detail that helps with some of those things. I mean, I think we have to, as Julian is noting, we're going to see what the governor says. But then we really need to look at both the, the way that the flow is at our beaches throughout a given day, as well as the different characteristics of each of those beaches. And I don't think it's going to be a one set of rules for every single beach because it doesn't make sense. Our beaches aren't used in the same way, you know, by, by our visitors and by our residents. So, you know, my hope is that we really kind of independently look at each beach because they're, you know, the, the parking available, the beach available, the, the level of usage, all those things differ. So I hope that we really take a very independent evaluation of each beach as we come up with a plan for this season. But I do know I have spoken with beach department and they are very well situated in terms of staffing. They said that the young folks who generally work there are dying to get to work because they. they are, they have this time on their hands. A lot of those college students are home, and they are looking to get to work. So, I had a very positive conversation regarding the number of employees available, really just waiting for a plan to be in place, and that that plan needs to get there for us to hit the ground running, because those beaches will be busy as soon as it's nice out. Sam, I saw your hand. And then Doug Brown, I think I saw you raise your hand. Go ahead, Sam.
Yes, I, one of the questions that I think we're going to be struggling with is what constitutes a, a family gathering? You know, is it going to be strictly the group size? Because some people are going to come, and, and then we know that a lot of times, more than one family, set of parents, if you will, come with their children and grandparents and what have you. And, and the size can get pretty big pretty quickly. So, I would think that one of the things I'm throwing out is, we're going to have to think about that, and, and that comes under enforcement. And how are we going to set the line? And what are we going to use? It's, I don't see it as a very, it's going to be a difficult and complex challenge for us, I believe. And you're asking college students to try to enforce, and so, it's something we need to be thinking about ahead of time.
So, I'm glad you touched on the hours, because I was going to suggest that we extend the hours to monitor the parking lot, and I hope we can consider adding some seasonal police officers to actually man these beaches. You know, we used to have officer at the Heights Beach all the time. I think it's going to have to go back to that for this season, at least at, at the beginning to start off. And I have heard from other residents that would like to consider having resident-only, whether it's seasonal residents and full-time residents, but not allowing the general public to just pay cash to get in, maybe try to keep the numbers down that way. And I like the idea of the, the staff staying later into the sunset time if they're willing, and having a police officer down there. I think we're going to have to do all these things, especially if we open the beaches prior to opening everything else, because if the beach is the only place to go, they're going to get swarmed again.
Just one piece, and I think we've been hearing a lot of the same, Doug, I think you're touching upon a lot of the same things that I'm hearing from folks about recommendations. And one thing I, I hope people keep in mind, and obviously our concern is public safety, but the beaches with those, I mean, they bring in quite a bit of revenue, particularly with not just the beach stickers for residents, but, you know, all of those sort of week-long passes, the day parking and things like that. So, you know, it'll be something to take a look at. And again, you know, we have Bruce Magardo, I think, could probably have written a dissertation on the beaches of Falmouth. He has been doing this for decades and really knows them in and out. And I think, you know, when we have this detailed conversation, and Maggie has done a lot of work and really is standing ready and able, and she's going forward in terms of getting, you know, plans in place. So, I think that we'll, you know, we have a lot of information that we can have at our disposal to think about how we craft something, and it probably is, you know, it's going to be somewhat individualized. Each beach is a little bit different. So, hopefully, we can, our next conversation will perhaps be with, you know, my, and, and maybe we can just get some feedback from the board. My thought was that we would ask the town manager to, you know, put together a meeting in the coming weeks. That would include the beach department, the chief police, someone from DPW, and maybe a member of the board, to sort of do that more problem-solving, deeper conversation, to have something to present to the board for discussion. Does that make sense?
Include Scott.
Oh, yes. Thank you, of course. Yes, thank you, Doug, including Scott McGann. Is that, is that okay with the board to direct him to do that? I think it's a more productive way.
I would agree. Definitely agree with that.
Sue?
I, I wonder if, if Mike Sperian might be the, the voice of the, you know, sort of the accommodations and the, you know, summer folks.
Okay. We're inviting him to all of our meetings. He's going to really get tired of us. So, we can, so we can direct the town manager to put something together in the next few weeks and, and just come back to this board. Again, we are waiting on that May 18th information from the governor, but I think, you know, June is around, we're halfway through May, so June is really around the corner. Great. Any other comments or concerns? Mr. Suso, and then Doug Brown?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I mentioned Maggie, our interim beach superintendent. Maggie's last name is Clayton, so I apologize, Maggie. You've been with us for a considerable period, and we're very thankful. And, and you teaming up with Bruce Magardo, as has been noted, we have extraordinary experience and insight, and look forward to moving in the direction the board has requested.
Great. Thank you. Doug Brown?
I heard you say, over the next few weeks? Is that, will it really take that long? We could probably...
Well, I'm just saying the next couple of weeks. I mean, I think we need some guidance from the governor on the 18th, which is next week, and then we could have conversations once we have a little bit of insight as to what, you know, the next phase is. Just, it's already Monday by the time we get everyone together at some point, maybe next week.
I'd be willing to attend that if, if needed. Sooner the better. People are anxious to get back out there if they can.
Our next meeting not until June 1st, anyway?
Right. No, we meet on May 18th, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we meet next Monday.
Yes. So, in other words, after, I mean, Doug Jones raises a good point. So, you know, hopefully having perhaps some, some recommendation for that June 1st meeting. It would be the goal.
Okay.
That shouldn't be a problem at all.
Right. Great. Thank you. That gives time for our conversation and for the governor's weigh-in. So, okay. Great. Individual selectman report.
Well, I did another white ribbon conference Zoom meeting, and we're still moving forward, thinking of creative ways to get the word out about domestic violence and the issues that are at hand. It's, it's really prevalent right now. I'm hearing the reports from the people at Independence House that the need is greater than ever, and it's a real concern. When I attended the event this past summer, I was really surprised to learn that the previous year, there had been 1,300 calls for assistance of some sort of another from Falmouth residents to the Independence House for, whether it's counseling or a place to stay or whatever. And now, they've cut the numbers in for the past year, and it's 1,700 Falmouth residents. So, that's a pretty big increase, and this is a problem that I had hoped would be kind of fading away, but it seems to be continuing to be a huge problem.
Those are just the folks...
Very interesting conference with the people from the Independence House, explaining the services and what they do. It was very informative. I was very, I'm, I'm surprised how big the problem is, but it was informative to learn about it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything in particular to report this week? I lost, I lost Sam. Sue, you're muted. Everything's falling apart now.
Just agreeing with you.
Okay. Well, seeing no reports from the board of selectmen, town managers report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to zero in on a couple of things. As the board's aware, our water main replacement project is moving ahead swiftly. Some detours remain, and there's some road resurfacing that lies ahead. Again, our target is to bring that very close to closure by the end of the month, and then an additional more minor phase remains in the fall. But we are one season ahead of our original schedule on this, so we're delighted and our compliments to Steve Rafferty and Peter McConerty, and all involved in that, as well as CC Construction, our contractor. And I also want to note, speaking of Peter McConerty, Peter's been very successful in moving forward that Queens Byway, Palmer Avenue reconstruction, road reconstruction project. And today, I noted that the granite Center Island in Palmer Avenue, the main entryway into downtown was put in place, and it's going to be a very attractive and a positive improvement for the town in our primary entryway into downtown. So, we appreciate all the fine work on that, and look forward to that coming to closure. And as noted, Madam Chair, members of the board, your next meeting is one week from tonight, Monday, May 18th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I, I would just say, along the same lines, I, it looks wonderful, but also there have been projects out by, near Crane Wildlife and by the, one of the entrances to Kunemesset Pond near the golf course, where there has been fencing and some parking. It looks really wonderful, and, and I know the DPW has been doing work over there, and it's a huge improvement to what was sort of a casual use of that area, but it was, you know, because people were just parking wherever they wanted. It was always really a degraded, you know, area with lots of mud and rut. So, it looks beautiful and hasn't been the best working condition, so we really appreciate that. It's a lot of work going on. Doug, I saw you raise your hand.
I just had a question for Mr. Suso. Is the road waterline contractor considering asking for, to work past Memorial Day, since the conditions seem to be good for that?
Well, he has a great question. Essentially, if, if he were working only on the town portion of the road, he could make that request. However, by Memorial Day, we anticipate essentially he will be with that, outside of, by and large, outside of the town portion of the road right away, and the work that remains is within the, the state portion, Route 28 portion. And there's a prohibition by Mastod on working beyond Memorial Day on that part of the highway. So, that's a request that could not be honored, because you'll be, again, as anticipated, outside our primary downtown area, which ends essentially at Heights Boulevard.
I was just wondering if they might request from the state, but I guess we'd have to ask them.
I'm, I'm told that request is one that is routinely declined, because of the influx of visitors that Mastod just asks that that not be entertained. That doesn't mean that we couldn't ask for it, and certainly I'll be happy to explore that with Public Works Director Peter McConerty and others.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
We adjourn. Jones?
Moran, second.
All those by roll call. English Braga, aye. Moran?
Aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
And I think that we don't have Sam, but if he is there? Nope. All right. Great. Thank you. Thanks to everyone for making this another great meeting. Thanks to all the folks in IT. We really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.